We had everybody there.
There's Tammy.
Penex, double B, Dr. Smith.
Well, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening with some additional information regarding the Magnet Schools Grant. I also have with me Saber Wright, who is our lead writer on this grant and can provide us with some additional information regarding any specific and detailed questions that you may have. We are coming to the board tonight to ask for your support of this grant in agreeing to enter into a voluntary desegregation plan. I shared with you last week that the items listed within the resolution are already items that we are engaging in within the district. Also, last week, there was a request to bring you greater detail in regards to the grant as to what we're proposing. So, if you take a look at this next sheet, you will see listed to the left, the name of the school, what we are currently proposing as a district to provide to that specific school, and then the enhancements that we believe will be available to those schools through the grant. In most of those, for most of those schools, you see the addition of positions, Magnet Schools Coordinator, you see Parent Liaison, you see a general topic just in terms of additional staffing. You also see the opportunity to expand the professional development that we want to offer teachers, as well as the opportunity for our students to participate in competitions, to go deeper into the specific fields associated with the focus of those schools. Looking specifically at Gregory, we would look at actually offering bilingual language certification opportunities for our students. This, again, represents an enhancement that would be covered under the grant, not something that we currently are planning with our existing budgets for that school. Experience or learning opportunities would be a big part for Gregory and Rachel Freeman as well, and then also differentiated salary schedule. I know we just had a conversation about supporting some of our targeted assisted schools. This grant would allow us to expand that to include Gregory International School as well. And then also some extended STEM Day opportunities. So, not only could we offer possibly before-school and after-school services, but also opportunities on the weekend. In some areas, we're actually looking to increase the number of school days. So, we've got one school already in our district that the students attend for 200 days as opposed to the traditional 185. That would be an option or an opportunity as well. For Snipes Academy of Arts and Design, if we'll scroll down just a little bit more, there we would be able to offer a full-time band orchestra instructor. Right now, we're looking at that being a shared position or a split position with an existing school. We would also be able to enhance the offerings that we're currently proposing. We're proposing to offer instrumental music to those students. This would allow us to expand that. Also, jury performances along with additional artisans and resonances. And if you've had the opportunity to experience any of those artists that have come to either DC Virgo or Snipes Academy of Arts and Design, you know the powerful impact that those folks have with our children. So, we would be able to expand those opportunities as well. And then some sponsored professional development, possibly through the Kennedy Center. We do have a partnership with them, and most often, any opportunities that we have for professional development is coordinated through UNCW. With these funds, we would actually be able to sponsor that. So, going above and beyond what we're currently proposing. Similar things listed for Virgo Preparatory Academy, but we would be able to expand their robotics program, purchasing kits for competitions, and then enhancing their technology. So, moving beyond having just simply iPads or laptops that children have access to, but moving into smart tables and things of that nature, and then also, specific requests that I've received, adding enhancements for their intersections. So, these are some of the things that we are proposing to include in the grant. And as you can see, there's a comparison to what the district is currently proposing, as well as what we would add as an enhancement with the grant. The last document that you have is actually the grant application itself, and I included that so you could see the complexity of the grant. They're asking for, I think on page 11, the narrative, that's where we would include information about each of the schools and what we would offer for those schools. Page 14 specifically asks information about the desegregation plan information. Page 15 speaks to enrollment. That's not atypical for other grants that we've completed. And then also, page 24 asks us to review our current Magnet programs and talk about what that revisioning would look like. So, it's a very comprehensive grant. It's a very competitive grant, and it has a very aggressive timeline. I don't know if there are some additional things that you might like to ask or offer. Also, I'll share with you, there has been some discussion about the language of the resolution, and so we're very open to any recommendations, any modifications that the board would like for us to make. And so, if you have any questions, we're very happy to respond to those.
Could you go back to the table of contents for just a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, see up there where it says...
Typo desegregation plan. What does page 14 actually show?
So, this, I believe, is page 14.
Yes.
And so, here, it's a required plan, a voluntary plan, and what we were electing would be the voluntary plan, and that would be to reduce, eliminate, or prevent minority group isolation. And again, as I said from our last meeting, when we look at what we're doing already in terms of open choice, what we look what we're doing already in terms of having non-competitive application processes to our Magnet Schools, when we look what we're doing in terms of providing transportation to our Magnet Schools, all of those items fit under that criteria of already having that voluntary plan. So, we wouldn't be asking the district to do anything different than it's already doing.
Well, I don't have a problem with the grant itself. I am fully in favor of us submitting the grant requirement. I do have a problem with the resolution, and I have expressed that in that I would rather see the word diversity, because I think that covers a much larger group. When we're talking about Native Americans, we could talk about African Americans, we could be talking about Hispanics. I think diversity better reflects the cross-section of people who we are trying to serve at a school. And so, my only request would be that we change the resolution to use the word diversity, although it is used, it is used some in the original resolution. I would urge that we would change several places to have the word diversity inserted into the resolution.
Okay.
And I agree, because the diversity is not just the race. It's a lot of parts of the family and so many things that define diversity that we want to focus on. So, I think that's a better description of what we're looking for.
Dr. Smith, this is...
Yes.
This language comes directly from the grant application form, does it not?
It does. And we felt by writing it in such a way, it strengthened the resolution because of the alignment with the grant. But there's not a specific requirement that that exact language be a part of that resolution.
When was this? You mentioned that this grant process had changed recently. Did I read that somewhere?
So, the grant itself became available recently.
April 22nd. And the grant in previous years was focusing on minority group isolation as far as race. This year, they've added a second component that is a special competitive preference that we could go for that talks about socio-economic as well. So, when it says minority group isolation, it's not just focusing on race. It is talking about a broader diversity.
I would think the word diversity would be even more inclusive then.
So, there's a focus on socio-economic diversity? Is that what you're saying?
It is one of the competitive preferences that we can include, but it's not a requirement.
And that's in this document somewhere?
It is. It's competitive preference number five.
Number five. Which page?
Look it. It may be in the beginning. Scroll, can you scroll up a little? On the application checklist, it's listed.
So, page seven?
Page seven. Additional.
So, is that it?
That's number three, number five, yes.
Oh, is it through a link? Because I didn't...
It does.
Oh, okay. What pa- I'm sorry, what page is that?
Page seven.
Page seven, okay.
And we also believe very strongly that including the CTE High School makes this a more competitive application. We don't think that that's going to be something that they're going to see in every application that they review. And so, it's that emphasis on the development of workforce skills. So, even though it's competitive, we feel strongly that, you know, the application that we write will be very well-received.
How many years, going back, have the Magnet School program, has the Magnet School program been in place here in New Hanover County?
If I could turn to my historian, Dr. Holliday, for some assistance?
Oh, sorry.
Gregory's Magnet started in the summer of 92 is when they developed it, and they opened it in the fall of 92. That was our first Magnet School. And they started with a small district, but then it became so popular that they, and Mr. Higgins, you'll remember, they took the district away and allowed for it to be all Magnet.
That happened, that happened when Cottington opened, because...
Right.
Cottington, Eaton was filling up, but Cottington was not. And Dr. Martin, at that time, basically said, "We're going to make Gregory a county-wide Magnet, and you can either go to Gregory, you can go to Cottington, or you can go to J.C. Rowe as your district and school."
So, that was, but the summer of 92 was when it actually...
It started, it started, yes.
And then, our other Magnet programs came in with Freeman and Snipes when we were doing an elementary redistricting, when we opened Castle Hain.
Freeman did? Snipes did.
Just one more. And so, primarily, and just for my edification, because I've only been on the board for four years, so I'm trying to, I haven't, I don't have the extensive experience that, say, Ed has. These, the Magnet Schools typically have had quite a bit of federal aid in terms of grant applications or grant funding. Is that correct?
Specifically through Title I and additionally through local funds, we've identified them as priority schools for us, they have received additional monies.
But no, we've never had a Magnet Schools grant in this...
No, we have not.
Any other questions?
So, what can be done?
May I suggest, if we go back to the resolution, and I just simply put this out for consideration. As I said, I would prefer using the word diversity, and if that be the case, I can tell you the changes I would like to see if that's, if that would be okay with the board.
Did you agree, Mrs. Nichols? You mean, would you just, you mean go back through the resolution or through the grant itself?
Well, no, not through the grant, but through the resolution. For example, where it says adoption of voluntary desegregation plan, that would be changed to student, adoption of student diversity, oh, excuse me, student diversity plan resolution. That in the first paragraph, where it talks, let's see, wait a minute, is that right? Hold it.
Because it talks about diversity.
Oh, yeah. It talks about diversity. I'm sorry, I wouldn't look. In the...
The second where...
Yeah, the last one did.
Okay, what, the... Okay, okay.
The last.
Yeah, it's in the last. If you go down to the last, adopt instead of a voluntary desegregation plan, it would read that New Hanover County Board of Education would develop a student diversity plan for the district's Magnet Schools. So, again, inserting the word diversity into a sentence in the resolution.
Based on our reading of the requirement, I think that we can make all of those changes, except for renaming the document.
Okay, well, I mean, no, then you don't...
I think that the name of the resolution would have to stand, but the language within the resolution surely could reflect the language that you shared.
Well, I don't like that, but I can live with it.
Thank you.
But would this imply that there's not a, that this is not in effect now?
Say again?
The adoption of a voluntary desegregation plan.
Yes.
Would that imply that that is not the case now?
I don't think it does for us specifically as a district, because everything that's listed are things that we're already doing. There's nothing new that we're asking the board to do differently. The only thing is entering into what, you know, in signing a resolution, it's a more formal agreement, but it's a commitment that the board has made, that the board has made for a period of time. I definitely understand the language and how it might be interpreted, but when you look at what the board is currently doing to increase the diversity of our current programs, it aligns with this resolution.
So, why can't you change the name of the resolution? Is that the requirement?
Because, yes, specifically in the, page 14, thank you, that's why I brought her. But specifically, it requires the, a resolution that speaks to a voluntary desegregation plan. So, what you conclude in your resolution is at the discretion of the board, but the fact that you have this voluntary desegregation plan, that is the language of the grant and the required language of the grant.
Mr. Chair, I might. What Dr. Smith is referring to is in the U.S. Department of Education, where they're telling you who's eligible for this grant, it indicates that, I mean, we can send you that language, but it indicates, it says only LEAs or consortium of LEAs that are implementing a court-ordered or federally-approved voluntary desegregation plan that includes Magnet Schools are eligible to apply. So, it uses that specific language in the instructions for the grant.
But we're under no court order or anything.
No, it says "or." It says "or this." This is, you're a court-ordered federally-desegregation plan, which we are not, or a voluntary, which what this is.
But by adopting this, I mean, essentially by adopting a resolution, you are accepting the premise that your schools are segregated.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, that is plain and simple. That is the language that you are, that you are accepting.
And that's not the intent of our Magnet Schools.
That's what your resolution says.
I know.
Now, the action, if you read the resolution, you're trying to increase diversity. You can't, the title is the title. So, you, I would say, get past the title and get into the meat of what you're trying to do.
Well, as I said, if, you know, if you modify that last, the now, therefore clause, don't like it, but I can live with it.
Okay.
But I do want to see the word volun- I do want to see student diversity for the district as opposed to voluntary desegregation.
Because it was a voluntary plan adopted when, Dr. Holliday, do you remember how many years ago?
That was when we were looking at the last Magnet School grant. That would have been...
About a decade ago.
Probably 2008.
So, there'd be no problems with putting in there what Mr. Higgins had suggested?
No. If the, if the motion from the board is to do such and it's approved, then we would make that, those changes in that language before we would present it to you for your signature. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve based upon the insertion of what Mr. Higgins has suggested in the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Are there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I root Mr. Schell hung up.
Do we need to vote on the application too?
No, you'll do that later. Tonight was just the resolution.
Okay.
Next item?
One more, correct.
Excuse me, item seven, under information, item A, signature Academy, appendage D, Dr. Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Smith, how are you?
Pardon? So, my name is Sandy Siselski, and I stood before you in February 2013 presenting vision for the Marine Science Academy, which is the signature program at Ashley High School. So, we have now been running for three years. Everything in my presentation, we are currently doing, and I also wanted to focus on a couple of wonderful occurrences that have happened over the last three years. So, currently, it is running for the entire school year. The fall semester is Oceanography, Introduction to Oceanography, which is OCN 150. It's a freshman course at UNCW and at Cape Fear Community College. Next, you can go ahead and click all of that if you want, in lieu of saving time. The spring semester is Introduction to Marine Biology. It is college-level. Currently, what we are doing is working with graduate students, either masters or PhD students at UNCW, to enrich the curriculum. We go to UNCW and Cape Fear Community College for coursework as well. The students are doing the same labs and the same activities that the UNCW students are doing. We are in a separate environment so that our students do not mix with university students, and I'm with them at all times. Also, they are conducting real-time data analysis. Currently this semester, they are working on a global research project on jelly blooms and looking at the environmental, physical, and chemical and geological impacts of global jelly blooms. So, my students are working on the same data and as well as submitting it and working with PhD student at UNCW. They are receiving college waiver credits, and quite a few of the students are taking UNCW and Cape Fear Community College up on this offer and attending and staying local and keeping a brain drain from leaving New Hanover County and staying here in New Hanover County for college. And they are receiving college waiver credits, six college waiver credits. The internship in marine science has been a real bonus. Both UNCW and Cape Fear Community College have had a very open-door policy in welcoming our students into graduate research labs to work alongside masters and PhD students. The graduation project in marine science has been a phenomenal opportunity, and I'll get into that in a couple more slides. The Summer Enrichment Program is a collaboration with UNCW and New Hanover County Schools, and this means our students are, instead of in session 180 days, it's 185. So, they start school a week early on the UNCW calendar. They competed this last year and every year in the Ocean Science Quiz Bowl. And a big bonus this year is we had a student who worked in a research lab in marine biochemistry alongside Dr. Steve Scrabble and submitted his research paper to the North Carolina Junior Academy of Science and Humanity Symposium, and he was the first student whose paper was, has ever been accepted from New Hanover County. He presented his paper and his research at UNC Charlotte in February. So, this is a basic flow from the Summer Enrichment Program, which we start a week early, then New Hanover County Schools, their fall semester. They could be working on their graduation project, fall or spring semester, and then the fall semester is the Introduction to Oceanography. Their internship runs for the whole year. We have a full gamut of opportunities. We have students working at the Agriculture Center at Wrightsville Beach, the Shellfish Sanitation Center at CMS, as well as at the aquarium, and also in the research labs at the CREST Research Center, the Biotechnology Research Center at UNCW. Next. And this, again, is just a general academic plan for students to, this is something I've shared with parents as well, so they understand, you know, what their options are, to be taking lots of AP Sciences and Maths, and lots of collaboration. One thing, this program has been recognized by the NC Innovate Council with the Emerging Issues Consortium with NC State University, and the high school program in marine science has been a big focus for the grant that we are currently working on with the Innovate NC to show that marine science is embedded in our community and our educational foundation. in our community and our educational foundation for the public schools as well as the university and community college. And a lot of project-based learning. They start projects in the fall, tremendous amount of writing. When I first began working on this vision and this concept, I, I wanted to find a way that this could benefit students. They do receive honors credit and not AP credit because it's not recognized by the college board. So I wanted to figure out a way that this would really benefit students and that is through high-level writing and research skills, where they take an individual research project and work on it throughout the entire school year and then not only write an in-depth scientific research paper on it, but also submit it for competition, which has come to fruition. One of my students was accepted to Duke this year and his acceptance letter was based on his experience in the academy that he reached outside the box, tried new things and was very successful. The financial advantage for students receiving the college waiver credits and the career exploration, that sometimes they decide what they really enjoy and then they also decide what I totally do not like doing, anything with fish whatsoever. So sustainable and also creating the next generation of marine scientists. And thank you for your time and I enjoy working on it and.
Can you talk about your enrollment numbers and your plans to expand, any plans to expand?
Expand? Well, I am a one-person show, so that is, it's, but the idea is, you know, twenty-five students maximum and I think unless there were more than one teacher. Right now I have eighteen enrolled for this next year. I had sixteen this last year. It's relatively small, very focused, small group of students. I would like to expand into lower grades if possible. And I think we are working that direction with some collaboration that Mr. McCarty has set up with Murray. Our students are going back and forth with the academically gifted students at Murray, encouraging involvement and working that the students come over to Ashley from Murray and work with our students in the lab. And then my students also go over to Murray as a way to foster increased interest and enrollment in the future.
How many other districts?
One this next year, two this last year from Hoggard, and I have one student that was accepted from New Hanover. He submitted, there's still applications coming in that will be throughout the summer as students enroll new into the district. I usually have two or three that will be new students that way.
We would like to develop curriculum strands that run all the way to the elementary level, so that students will find the focus and hopefully work toward the program when they reach high school.
Comments, questions from the board?
No.
I think it's great focal.
Yeah? Thank you very much.
We appreciate all the work. Thank you for your support. It means a lot. We have a very focused, energized group of students, a small group, but very focused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon and thank you all for having us here today. I'll apologize ahead of time for my Darth Vader-like voice. Something's hit me this morning and it keeps getting worse, so to help me today, I have Ms. Jean Hall here. She's our IB coordinator for Hoggard and we're going to kind of tag team this presentation tonight. We started our program a year after the marine science program, so we're actually in our second year of the IB program, going into our third year, year next year. The overall mission, you can read that, but the really, for the IB is looking for a rigorous curriculum that expands students to a global view of society. You see here around the world, there are only less than twenty-six hundred schools that have been accredited for IB. And as of March or February, Hoggard became officially accredited IB school, so we are a part of those now. Just only a little over, less than fourteen hundred schools in the country with North America have that distinction, so we're very proud of that. What we have here, and this is the thing that really helps me understand the IB program more than anything else, it is a program. And you often hear about the difference, what's the difference between AP and IB? AP, the way I kind of explain that to everyone, it's, it's an à la carte type of choice. You can choose this or this or this. But the IB, it is a program, you're looking for a diploma at the end of this, so there are specific courses you have to take. That second circle from the outside, there are six different curriculums or subject areas that you have to choose five courses that they have to take from, or from five different of those. And they have to take a sixth course, which they can choose any of the others. So it's very prescriptive in the sense of what they have to take. On the inside of that, the three others, Theory of Knowledge, which they affectionately call TOK, the CAS, which is Creativity, Activity and Service, all right, thank you. And the other one is the Extended Essay. These are the things on top of the classes they have to take. Of these, the Extended Essay and the CAS are not classes of themselves. These are things their students are doing outside the classroom. The Theory of Knowledge will actually be a class that they will take also along with that. And what, what I really like about this and that, that center part, the center part is the students, it talks about approaches to learning, but it also talks about approaches to teaching. And while we may be only reaching a couple of hundred students through the actual IB program, the teachers that are teaching within the program are trained to teach through the IB approaches to teaching. So the other classes that they will be teaching, they will also be spreading those approaches and those that learning throughout them, so it will have a broader effect. Within those courses, they have what they call either a high-level or a standard level of course. Higher level requires two hundred and forty hours over two years and the standard level requires one hundred and fifty. At the end, they do have to take exams. If it's a high-level course, they take that, much like the same timeframe as the AP courses and they are a little more expensive than the AP courses. And they also have to do the four hundred, four thousand word essay by the time they, before they graduate, take the DOK class and complete the CAS project. And, and since this is kind of like our graduation project on steroids, it really involves all that and takes it to the next level. This would be a sample, a schedule that a student would have and it's, it's pretty packed. And we do have teachers that are teaching all of those. And if you look at this, I think there are seven courses that are required, IB courses, which leaves only one course each year for a, the Hoggard student to take a Hoggard type of course. One of the things that comes up.
At least, at least one.
At least one, yeah. And one of the things that comes up a lot from, from parents and students are concerned, well, it, it might, it's going to limit the number of, the electives my student can take, such as band or ROTC. And we've kind of come up with a plan for that. The TOK, which they have to take for part of the year, offering that as a, an AM class so they have another time in their schedule for doing that. So we're trying to work out ways that we can provide them everything that they want. And I'm going to step off now so my voice doesn't continue to lose and I'll turn it over to Ms. Hall.
Okay, thank you. So as Dr. Sullivan said, at the end of every IB course, there's an exam. So for the standard level courses, those can run a year. IB prefers that they run two years, which is a beautiful concept on a European schedule, not so much on an American high school schedule. So the majority of the standard level courses will only run one year, but every school has to choose one course that it will run the two years. And at Hoggard, we've chosen math. All of the IB math courses at standard level will run two years. NIB midway through every course, whether it's high-level or standard level, you have what's called an internal assessment. That's the description on the top. It is teacher administered, administered. The teacher also scores it, but those scores are audited by IB. So there's a very tight quality control mechanism there by IB. There are some examples of how the internal assessments look. And then the external assessments occur in the month of May. They pretty much take up the entire month of May, running a little longer than AP exams. The state's paying for those too. And there's also a registration fee per student, one-time registration fee, and the state is covering that as well for every IB student. This is the assessment process, more of that quality control. It was, we're, we're actually in a very good place in our timing with becoming authorized because in the past, schools had to box up literally every exam, much like AP is done now, put it on a DHL carrier and ship it to Europe for scoring. Now more and more, everything is digitally uploaded, saving us a great expense. So the shipping expense has gone from the thousands to about eight hundred dollars per school. Broaden High School in Raleigh is our mentor school and I was there on Tuesday and we kind of did the math and even for the exams they have now, I think the total was about seven hundred and eighty, but next year, that will be diminished even further, so. The community part, this is some, an aspect of, of the pre-DP that we have now in ninth and tenth grades that, that some students love. And that is, they have a couple of classes where they are together as pre-IB, pre-DP students, and that is civics and English as ninth graders and then AP, World History and Honors English to as 10th graders. And, and beyond that, Hoggard's not that huge of a, of a place. They do see each other in other classes throughout the day, but it's just enough of a mix for them to start to build a sense of community and know by the end of 10th grade if that's really something they want to continue. The diploma and university admissions, college admissions, the IB and especially the Extended Essay and the CAS project are unique talking points for their essays. It is the most rigorous pathway available through high school. That's not just my personal opinion, it's the opinion of many. Admissions rates for IB candidates higher almost universally and unique attention from colleges. And there are several colleges that will give full scholarships to, uniquely to IB students because they are IB students. College credit primarily awarded for higher-level exams, some SLs as well. AP and SL run pretty much on the same scale. So if a school's offering AP credit, they will most likely offer SL credit. HL credit typically is, garners more because it's taking the content to a greater depth. Success in university, the graduation rate is significantly higher for DP graduates. There is a lot of focus in IB coursework and this is another difference in many cases between an AP rollout and an IB rollout. And the difference is that IB focuses very much on the process of where a student needs to get through a course. And, and in some cases, the AP may be focused more on the product. That's not true in all cases, but it's, it's something that our teachers have noticed going through their trainings and it's a nice summation, how they see, it's one note, it's one thing that they, they all feel consensus-wise that is true for them. Course credit, it, you would think that even the UNC system would have a homogeneous process for that, but it, it does not. So within the HL versus ASL credits, English high-level, for example, would garner three credit hours at both UNCW and Chapel Hill. Spanish standard level, none at UNCW, high-level only, but it, it garners six at Chapel Hill. So it's, the students, I tell them, it's a bit of a moving target. And what, what is true when you're a freshman will not probably be true when you're applying for school as a senior. Some myths about IB that, that I dispel on, on the regular, that students have no life. All they do is read and write and write and write and write and they never see daylight. And that's not true. That's not true at all. The students I've met, I've met IB students internationally, statewide, nationally, they're all extremely busy, socially engaged teenagers, just like our, our highest achieving here in the district now. That the IB diploma program is primarily a liberal arts program. This is not true. And I think that people often forget that the IB is an international organization. So the pie chart is looking at every diploma program in the world and with the highest percentage going to engineering. Some other differences and similarities between IB and AP. The rigor of individual courses is true for both. External assessment by independent impartial organizations is true. Requirement of critical thinking at highest level of success and the potential for college credit. And then the distinctions between the two, the general length of courses, like I was saying, IB would love for all of their courses to run two years, but at minimum, the high levels must. The depth of study in individual courses, course assessment structure, emphasis on research and writing skills, emphasis on evaluative skills and individual courses, like Dr. Sullivan was saying, an à la carte folk approach rather than a program itself. Currently at Hoggard, our rising, our first cohort for next year, we have forty-six students. The majority of those, forty of those students have been at Hoggard since ninth grade. They were not all districted for Hoggard, but they were there from ninth grade. And then we've had six students who transferred in either between ninth and 10th grades or who are now transferring in as a rising 11th grader. Our rising 10th cohort, our current freshman group sits at ninety-three students. And then our rising ninth cohort is actually almost up to a hundred and thirty. Pre-DP cohorts represent all but one public middle school currently, all private middles and, and also homeschool students. This was our authorization process. Hoggard was authorized in February of this year. It took two years plus. It took a lot of homework and exploration even before we officially became a candidate. We held a program presentation for our entire faculty to field interest and emphasis and opinion on how we wanted to move forward with that. We have had over twenty-two DP and pre-DP teachers complete more than thirty-two trainings, official trainings through IB since over the past two and a half years. We've hosted the IB consultant in the candidacy phase. She was here for three days. She comes individually. And then we hosted the IB authorization team in the authorization phase and they were here for two days. That's a lot, questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, I have one. At the National School Board Association meeting, I spoke with the IB people. And so that raises a question. You said that most of your student, your students come from all the middle schools, except one, I think you said. Is there, is there a school that they primarily come from?
No. Do you mean private or public?
Here's what, here's what I'm getting at. One of the things I spoke to the people at the School Board Association meeting was they have started an elementary IB program. And, you know, I, my, my thought was the possibility of reaching out to the elementary school that feeds maybe a middle school where maybe a bulk of your students may be coming from.
I see. No, no, I, I've been really pleasantly surprised. It's a really nice mix of students across the board.
Okay.
Not, not heavily concentrated in any one area.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Very good, very proud. A lot of work.
We're excited, it is a lot of work, but please don't go coaching her anytime soon. You're all right, take a two minute break. Leave her with me for a little while. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have Ms. Ellen Sally with me here tonight, who is our STEM program coordinator, so she's going to talk in just a little bit. But before we get started, I wanted to take just a moment to say thank you to, to Dr. Markley for requiring all the high schools to have a, a signature program because this wasn't always the case. And I know that about three years ago, when he came to visit me one day at school, he, we were talking about the, the possibility of, of signature programs and what they would look like and, and I had some ideas that weren't exactly signature program type of ideas. And he said, Al, you're going to have to have a signature program. We want every high school to have one. And so he made that a mandatory requirement. And then we had the opportunity to work with a team of, of folks that we put together, a STEM team, or excuse me, a signature program team that helped us to determine what that signature program was going to look like. I know that Dr. Smith had planted a seed or two because right next door, Trask Middle School had a, a project lead the way program. So there was a natural segue coming into Laney of, of STEM students. So there was a natural segue coming into Laney of, of STEM students. Uh, that being said, we, we put together a, a group of folks. We actually had a board member, uh, Ms. Koval actually served on that, that committee with us where we had a group of folks come together and, and take a look at what we wanted our signature program to be. We surveyed our students, um, we surveyed our staff. And, and from that information, we also did a lot of research on what was relevant career wa, uh, career-wise for our kids. We, we took a look at all that information and overwhelmingly, we came up with a, a program that suggested that we needed to take a look at, at, uh, having a STEM focus or a STEM signature program. So that's kind of why and how we, um, became a, a STEM school and, and why we went with that. And, and here's just some data, why STEM? And if you, if you take a look at the careers, uh, that are listed up here, um, these are all, um, very hard to hire for. These are all very technical, um, type of careers, um, that we hope that our students will be more prepared, um, to be a part of as they move through our STEM program. Uh, with the STEM program, um, uh, we, um, bring in a cohort every year. So we are actually in our, our third year. Well, next year would be our third cohort. But with our planning year, this would be our third year when we're taking a look at planning. Uh, this is our, um, our STEM program mission statement. This was created by our, our STEM teachers at Laney High School. They had the opportunity to put this together. So this was the, uh, their, their, um, their mission. I'm not gonna read that to you. I know you guys can read that slide yourself, but it's certainly up there. Program participation, we started with the idea that we would have thirty students in our first cohort. Um, we had almost fifty students in the first year. Uh, we did not turn any student away. We kept every student that wanted to be a part of the program. Um, the very next year, again, we were hoping for maybe sixty. We had in excess of ninety students that applied to be a part of the program. Uh, for this coming up year, we also have in excess of ninety students that have, uh, applied to be a part of the program. Uh, we've only lost two students in the program to date. So all the kids that have pretty much joined the program have, have stuck with the program. They've, they've stayed with it. And you can see our numbers for next year with the new cohort coming in. We're looking at about two hundred and thirty students that would be a part of the program. We also are, it's very important for us that we, we built a program that didn't require students to make a, a decision, that they couldn't do one thing or another thing. So if you're gonna be a part of the STEM program, you can still be in the band. You can still be in the chorus, you can be in the ROTC. We wanted to make sure that we weren't ruling out other options for our students. We wanted them to have an opportunity to, to be in STEM, but also to have other, uh, opportunities as well and, and not lose those. This is just a sample of what some of our students would take. We would require them to have at least four, um, courses out of, um, these different cohorts. In our STEM program, we have two cohorts. We have a medical program and then we have the engineering program. And they would have to take at least four courses, uh, in this concentration to earn that. More than likely, these kids are gonna take seven or eight of these courses or eight or nine of these courses. Typically by the end of their, uh, first year, they would be, uh, excuse me, their second year, they would have at least a four, um, course concentration already. I'm gonna turn it over at this point because this is getting more into our activities. This, one of the things about our STEM program is it's a heavy activity program. They do a lot of things after school. They do a lot of things, uh, over the course of the summer. And they, um, do a lot of things that are off-campus. So I'm actually gonna let Ms. Sally talk a little bit about the different programs and the different trips. And all the pictures that you're gonna see here are actually our kids, so.
So, um, as Mr. O'Brien was saying, um, a lot of our activities for the STEM program are outside of school. Um, since we have, you know, the kinda loose course requirements for students so they can pick and choose what fits their ability levels, um, a lot of our activities are outside of school. Um, summer, we have a summer program. Um, we are able to, you know, I work in trying to find opportunities and things for students to, you know, open their eyes to STEM careers or STEM opportunities in our area or our state. Um, what we've been able to do for the last two years is, uh, what I think is probably the strongest point of the program is that we have the opportunity to visit, um, colleges in our area that these students can hopefully, you know, apply to in two years. I was gonna go back one slide. So, you know, I, I'm not gonna read everything here, but, you know, a highlight from last summer, um, this, the DaVinci cardiac, uh, robot. This is something that our students were able to go to ECU and they actually, um, the machine up top, the robot. This is a robot that students, that actual physicians get to practice and learn how to do surgeries on, um, the heart. And our students were actually able to use and practice and play around on the same robot that, you know, these physicians were. So now I'm starting to see a lot of tenth grade kids consider ECU as a medical school instead of UNC or, you know, any others in the state. So, you know, push them that way.
No prejudice there?
A few other things, you know, I also tried to get them on campus at UNCW, you know, so they'll know what's in their area. Um, we, I usually take a group of, a group of freshmen every year to the simulation labs. That's the, the nursing simulation labs. And the students get to play around with little robots there and, you know, just learn about the technologies and the things that are going on in those, um, areas. This is something that came up this spring that was really a great opportunity. Um, it was the Second Annual, uh, Gains Conference. And they ha, happened to just host it in Chapel Hill and Duke. So it worked out perfect for us. Um, I was able to take six girls there, I took our top ten, or our top six tenth grade girls. Um, and they were able to tour, um, you know, lab facilities there, meet with professors at Duke and Carolina. Um, very inclusive, they, you know, they just took them right in. And it was a very meaningful, uh, weekend, I will say. Or actually, we were in Chapel Hill, made it very interesting, the night of the national, national championship. So.
I want you to know that I told her before she left, I said, if they win, you cannot go to Franklin. I said, I'm saying inside, I said, I'm using Dr. Smith because she's the one that turned us on to this.
Right.
For this opportunity. And we jumped on it and we had kids that were able to go and make sure.
It wa, it was really a great opportunity. Um, and those, on the last slide, the girls were actually holding a human brain, which was just insane to me. So, um, great, great week for them. Um, the only thing is we're gonna have to save our pennies 'cause next year the conference is in Southern California. And those same girls are dying to go. So we'll see how that works. Um, a few other things, uh, we have summer experience. Uh, we usually have a, a full week of activities for students in the area. Um, one highlight of last summer, this is probably my favorite picture in the last two years of this job, is, uh, we were able to get into the nuclear plant at, um, Duke Energy. And this was just, we were not actually in the reactor because they wouldn't let the kids in there. But this was, they had to have a training, um, to show what the nuclear workers had to do to go, you know, to suit up and go into the reactor. Um, so they, they hate this picture, the kids do, but I, I'll learn to show it.
They don't look very happy.
Um, and just a few other things, um, some highlights in the past year. We are growing, we are changing, you know. Every year, new programs come up. It keeps me very busy and I've been able to get some really good teachers on board and, um, start getting involved in these activities. Um, our sea perch program is something new and you'll probably start hearing a lot more about that. Um, it's, uh, where kids are actually building underwater rovers and they are operating them. And there's actually contests in Brunswick County at the end of this month that they'll be participating in. Um, we were, I was able to help them or we were able to fund some of that through a grant through Borough's Welcome. And it's really cool, they're actually, they, we bought, um, underwater cameras that you can actually hook up to like fishing lines. So you, the kids can see in real time what their rovers are doing under the water. So that's something that they've actually started practicing this week. Neat activity involved. Um, and then down at the bottom is our chem tech contest. And that's something we do here local with, um, Cape Fear Community College. Really good opportunity for kids to use their lab facilities there and learn, learn more about chemistry. Um, a few more things. I'll just highlight down at the bottom, uh, this young lady over here to the, you're right. Um, she is our spring semester guinea pig for a, um, North Carolina School of Science and Math IBC class. She's actually taken a course in Durham every day. She actually sits in my office and works on it. And she's actually doing a lab here, but she's in honors genetics and biotech this semester. Um, it's real time. She has a teacher, the teachers, you know, came and met with us before. And right now we have twelve to fourteen kids signed up in the fall for a, a bigger class. Um, so we're gonna have to have a classroom and some video conferencing things for that. But, you know, I'm really excited about it and that we had kids, you know, wanting to sign up. We're hoping to do aerospace engineering for the engineering cohort in the spring. Um, just a few other things. Um, STEM students are required to join a club or an activity at Laney. So it's really boosted a lot of our student organizations. Um, we have four, we ended up with four Science Olympiad teams this year. Our HOSA numbers have grown to over a hundred members. We've had STEM students participate at state level and some of them are actually going to nationals with HOSA. Um, we've had kids get involved in robotics, um, group here in Wilmington. They actually went to the International, um, World Championship here a couple of weeks ago. And we are looking at next year of expanding some of our CTE course offerings to fulfill, you know, these growing numbers for draft and engineering and the health science classes. That was a lot. But if you have any questions, if you, um, ever want to come out to Laney and see what we've got going on, feel free to email me. Um, I'll be glad to talk with you. And I just, I'm really, I feel fortunate to have the opportunity to work with this program. I just came into the county three years ago. So Mr. O'Brien just kinda just put me right into this place. But I have enjoyed it and I have, I really appreciate the opportunity to work with these kids and, you know, get this program going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before Hanover presents, we're gonna take a just three or four minute break.
Before we go, I just wanna say thank you to the, the board because we couldn't do this without the funding that you guys provide at all the high schools for the signature program. So I wanna say thank you to you guys. Dr. Markley, your vision was made possible by the funding that these guys have helped us with. So thank you.
I can only dream as big as their budget.